Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance and please remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Ask for a moment of silence for Don Newcombe. Don Newcombe was born in Madison on June 14th, 1926, when his parents were living in a garage apartment on Morris Place. That garage apartment still exists at the home of Charles Courtney. Don was then, went on to be raised in Elizabeth, attended Jefferson High School, and the school did not have a baseball team, so he took on semi-professional baseball while attending high school. And then, of course, as he became a full professional, he was held off from playing in the major leagues because of segregation and played in Negro leagues. He eventually joined Jackie Robinson and Roy Campanella as African-Americans on the Brooklyn Dodgers, and Don Newcombe became the first pitcher to win the career trifecta of Rookie of the Year, MVP, and Cy Young, something that was not repeated until 2011. And besides fighting the battle of racial hatred, he also fought the battle of personal battle over alcoholism. As he won that battle, he supported players later in his career who came up through the leagues. In 1989, at a reunion of Negro league greats, Don Newcombe reflected on his experience by saying, "I wish that," in some few words, "I could wipe away the pain you suffered so long because of the skin color you have. We know, I would not be here today if it were not for the Negro leagues. Thank God I had a chance to walk shoulder to shoulder with you." And on April 19th, 2010, President Obama said, "I would not be here if it were not for Jackie Robinson and if it were not for Don Newcombe." So let's take a moment of silence for true Madison great, first son of Madison, Don Newcombe. May I have a motion for the executive minutes of January 28th, 2019?
No move.
Second. And we did not cover this executive, so if there's any discussion, we'll hold off on approval. Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. A motion regular minutes of January 28th, 2019.
No move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And executive minutes of February 11th, 2019.
No move.
Second. Any discussion again, we'll hold off. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all. The winds for the last 24 hours were strong and dangerous, and if anyone east of me on Britton Street finds a stray garbage can, just let me know. All they have left is a lid, and thankfully, the papers stayed where they belonged. At the peak today, Morris County, there were 2,300 outages. In Madison, we had one at the northern end of town, as Councilman Hoover knows very well. Tree took down two poles and a transformer, cutting out power at north end of Greenwood, including John Marshall, Lorraine Hunter, and Overhill.
Very good.
Almost forgot. But again, it's our aggressive sunny day maintenance programs by Electric Department that continues to pay dividends on the days where the winds kick in. You've probably been following on social media the success of our high school boys and girls ice hockey teams. The girls' team is combined with Chatham. Seasons are fantastic, so we're looking forward to recognize them, possibly at the March 11th meeting, but if not, March 25th. And for the second year in a row, I presented at Leadership Morris Economic Development Session. Leadership Morris is a program of the Morris County Chamber of Commerce, giving an in-depth year in teaching what's going on in Morris County, great networking, developing of volunteer boards. This year's class includes our own Maureen Byrne. So I was there. There were supposed to be two other towns that were presenting on economic development, Dover and Hanover Township. Mayor Dodd from Dover was sick, but they did not present, but my general theme was, I made up a quote from Yogi Berra, which is, "How do you grow when you're not growing?" If you put the three towns in comparison, Dover, since 1960, their population has grown 38 percent. Hanover Township, since 1960, has grown 58 percent, and Madison has grown 6 percent. And reality is, we have grown in many other ways, and are a very successful town, so we talked about the, what we've done to make a very successful downtown, or talked about the chief executive council for Madison, as we support our corporations in getting CEOs involved. So it was a very informative session, I think, and I think the leadership in Morris County took a lot away from it, and it's always nice to brag about the great things going on in this town. So that's all I have for today. And reports from committees. Public Safety, Council President Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, first off, we had a fire today on the rooftop of 49 Main Street, which was successfully put out by our Fire Department, and our ladder truck was put to good use on that call. Then in the month of January, the Fire Department responded to 27 general alarms, 20 still alarms, 27 investigations, 32 medical calls, for a total of 106 responses for the month. And they held two department drills in January. They had 47 fire prevention inspections and four smoke CO resale inspections. The Fire Department with Geraldine will be participating in the Morris County St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, March 9th, and the parade is in Morristown, and it starts at noon. From the Police Department, we want to say congratulations to Sergeant Caveza, Patrolman Burns, and Patrolman Daniel. And they will be receiving the Morris County 200 Club Award for their heroic actions taken on the night of August 13th, 2018. Their quick response and interdiction saved the life of a troubled teen looking to take her own life. They worked as a team, which afforded the youth a second chance at life and the help she desperately needed, and it was a pleasure for the chief to nominate the three of them, and he, the chief thanks the 200 Club for their well-deserved recognition of our group. So thank you very much to our Madison Police Department. Also, Patrolman Dunn and Patrolman Morales are graduating today and will be inducted into the County CERT team today. That is the Sheriff's Emergency Response Team. Out of the 35 Morris County officers who tested for the team, only five passed all phases of the testing. So many congratulations to Patrolman Dunn and Patrolman Morales. You make Madison very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Anseboro Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are continuing our annual budget process with the presentations from our department heads. Administration and department heads have been working on their operating and capital budgets since July. During this time, over 750 individual operating budget lines are reviewed and millions of dollars of capital were discussed. These lines have been summarized and were presented to the governing body on February 11th council meeting, but I want to thank the department heads for all their hard work on their budget and being very considerate of the taxpayers of Madison, and it's nice that you've all come out this evening, too, to give up a little more time to help us out with answering our questions. As a reminder, there's a special budget hearing next Monday, March 4th, at 7:00 PM at the, at here, at the council chambers at Hartley Dodge, and at that time, we will review the municipal budget and the utility budgets. We will also review the new revenue the borough will get from the apartment and condo development at the old Green Village Road School. I could tell you that the complex is already the third highest paid amount of property taxes in Madison. We'll also review the alternate budget format and the strategic planning guidelines as well. Residents are encouraged to attend this important meeting. If all goes as planned, then the council will review and consider the budget for introduction on May 25th. We will then have a budget hearing on April 22nd, where we will hopefully adopt the 2019 budget. From the Borough Clerk, the clerk wants to remind everybody, in the anticipation of the June 4th primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for municipal office is April 1st, 2019. Sounds like it's far away, but you know, we're in March already at the end of this week. Forms are available in the Borough Clerk's office. Voter registration forms, as well as mail-in ballot applications, are also available in the Borough Clerk's office or online. You could go to marcellections.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, from the Electric Department, on Saturday, February 16th, at the corner of Park and Ridge Dale Avenues, there was a car meets pole accident. The utility pole was broken in half, so the crew temporarily secured it, and they then transferred all the lines to a new pole on Tuesday morning. We also sold our old bucket trucks at auction, and the new owners have picked them up. I believe we received in excess of $50,000, which will go back into the borough's capital program. From the Water Department, the water main replacement on Greenwood Avenue is scheduled to begin within the next couple of weeks. They will be replacing the main from John Marshall Lane to the Florham Park border. Later this year, we expect that that section of road will also be reconstructed as part of our 2019 capital program. Bob Vogel is shaking his head, yes. The department also attended a water system distribution operations seminar as required by law, and they also attended a New Jersey One Call Underground Utility Location Safety Meeting Program. As a reminder, when you or a contractor is working on your property and plans to dig, you must first contact the One Call Center by dialing 811. They will dispatch all the appropriate utility services to mark out their lines to ensure that none are damaged during your excavation. Next, the contractor working on the AMV Well Treatment Plant has completed their well restoration work. This is part of our ongoing effort to maintain all our wells to ensure that the water supply flows to all residents. And finally, both departments assisted with the snow removal process during the recent storm, so thank you very much for pitching in to help residents get around town.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Department of Public Works and Ken O'Brien. They were, they were not big storms, but they were significant. There was snow, there was sleet, there was snow, there was sleet. Getting that stuff up and off the streets and getting us out and working is kind of a tough thing to do, so thank you very much, and let's hope we see Crocus soon. We, on an environmental point, we've been very busy around here in Madison. The Madison Environmental Committee is sponsoring the Second Green Vision Forum, which will be held on March 14th at 6:30 at Drew University. If you remember last year, the council was sporting Central Avenue School water bottles. This is not one of them, but that was a project that came out of the Green Vision Forum, which challenged us, all the schools, including Drew, to come up with creative ways of helping to save our environment, specifically here in Madison. And I can tell you, it was the most enjoyable couple of hours I've had in a long time. The Environmental Commission is also having their usual monthly meeting at the end of this week, on Thursday, and we're going to be discussing Skip the Straws, which is a project they have in Summit, New Jersey. They're trying to get food establishments to either not give a straw with your water or your soft drink, and if you request a straw, to use a paper straw, which some of us, who are really old in this room, can remember was the only kind you had back in the day. Sustainable Jersey, Sustainable Madison, Madison has to go for our, our, forget it. Sustainable Madison, we apply to Sustainable Madison for Silver Status over the last almost 10 years now. It requires a review of what the town is doing, as well as action items the town can move itself going forward. We have had Silver Status for some time, and I'm very sure that we're going to obtain Silver Status again this year. The Historic Preservation Committee, unfortunately, because of that snow, we got, we got moved. That will be held, correct me if I'm wrong, March 12th?
12th.
March 12th, and I hope everyone who has interest in what the Historic Preservation Commission does, that they would come. And finally, in today's New York Times, they had a piece called "Eight Things You Can Do to Care for the Planet," and they're all pretty simple. One of them, I'm sure my husband would appreciate, buy less clothes, but what I thought was really interesting was tune your heating system. And we do have the SEAL program, and they'll come in and they will look at your house and test your heating systems, test your water heating systems, and it's inexpensive, it's under $50. They'll make recommendations, it's up to you to take care of them. But you know, I know from speaking with a number of people who have used this program here in Madison, the results can frequently be rather dramatic. So if you, if you want to receive this newsletter from the New York Times, you can go to their Climate Forward, FWD, sign up, and every week, they'll send you tips. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Committee Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. I always like to start off with seniors, because I think seniors need to be top of mind in everything we do. For the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, the next meeting is on Thursday, March 14th, at 2:00 PM in the Senior Center, and I would encourage everybody to please attend. It's an open public meeting. Based on the outcome of the last regular individual meetings are being scheduled to discuss ideas, we, at the last SCAC meeting, it was brought up that there should be individual discussions with the members, and they're going to talk about ideas such as projects they might undertake, organization of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee with roles and charter, and planning on forholding a SCAC meeting at the Rexford Tucker Apartments on May 9th. More seniors are being contacted to see if they would be willing to join SCAC as members. If anyone is interested in joining or knows someone who is, please contact the Chair, Tom Honahan, at thonahan@mac.com, or myself. The Senior Center, in addition to the following, I would like to call your attention to the monthly Madison Senior Services Newsletter, which is absolutely terrific, very, it's colorful, informative, and has all kinds of activities. An exercise program scheduled through June have been scheduled. Each class is $5 per person. New equipment has been purchased, and the reception so far is good. Improvement options to the exercise room are being assessed, such as adding floor-length mirrors and expanding the space with the growing and very active older adult population. ARP Tax Assistance Program started February 6th. Volunteers from ARP committed to help file seniors, help seniors file their tax returns for free. The appointments are 9:30, 10:30, and 11, 12:30, but there are only six appointments left. The last is April 10th. The new ship counselor, Anthony, is available on Wednesdays from 9:30 to 12:30 to answer questions on Medicare and Medicaid. Please call for appointments. On Tuesday, March 19th, a bus trip is scheduled to the Sands Casino. First pickup will be at 15 Chateau Thierry for residents only between 9:00 and 9:30. While other participants, other residents and non-residents, are asked to join to park at the Madison Memorial Park Ice Skating Rink, parking lot on Rosedale Avenue between 9:45 and 10:00 AM. The bus departs at 10:00. There will be games on the bus and prizes for the winners. We plan to leave Sands Casino by 5:00 o'clock at night and return by approximately 6:30. If people don't gambling, don't gamble. They may always enjoy shopping at the outlets attached to the casino and numerous lunch options. The cost is $30 a person, which includes $25 slot plate and a tip for the driver. On Wednesday, May 22nd, a bus trip to see the beautiful, see Beautiful, the Carole King Musical will be held. The first pickups will be at 15 Chateau Thierry at the same times, between 10:00 and 10:30, and the others at the Memorial Park between 10:45 and 11:00. Show begins at 2:00 and runs for approximately 2 hours and 15 minutes. We ask that everyone bring a bag of lunch. We will provide water and a bag of chips. Tickets are now on sale for $75 for orchestra seats. Cash, checks, Visa, MasterCard, Discover are accepted. Online payments are available on Community Pass. For the DDC and the Director of Business Development, okay, at the regular meeting of the DDC on February 21st, the commission held a planning session that included a review of the current bylaws and committee structure. Work will continue on potential changes to the bylaws over the next few months. The DDC will create a new standing committee immediately to be called Arts and Events. This committee will replace the former University Relations Committee. The four standing committees will now be Sign and Facade, Marketing and Economic Development, Public Improvement, and Arts and Events. The DDC's Marketing and Economic Development Committee has begun work on a new branding and marketing campaign. Working with local professionals, the committee will seek to establish a defined brand identity to help inform future public relations materials and wayfinding signage. May Day is scheduled for May 4th. Information regarding the student art contest and how to volunteer for the event will be available before the end of this, before the end of the month. Excuse me. Chamber of Commerce, the Madison Loyalty Rewards Card is being updated. A new card will be available by the end of the month. There will be a Chamber Camp Fair on Sunday, March 24th, at 10:00 to 3:00 PM at the Madison Community Arts Center. The Madison Area YMCA and Madison Harding Soccer League are key sponsors. Other exhibitors include a day camp, Bits, Bytes Code, Campus Kids Summer Camp, Creative Hands Art Studio, and Art Altoria, Madison Area YMCA Quest Camps, Madison Community House, Madison Mud Clay Studio, Madison Public Library, Moment Institute, Morristown Beard Day School, New Jersey Performing Arts Center, Original Music School, Step Right Up Studio, Think Tutoring, and the Wharton Institute for Performing Arts. Something for everybody. The Chamber's monthly happy hour has been moved to the 4th Wednesday, everybody's invited to this, 4th Wednesday of each month, and the new location is Shanghai Jazz. Upcoming events, the Easter Fun Fest on Saturday, April 13th. Sponsors are Cleaners Advantage, Madison Bagel Cafe, and Tap Into Madison. Ladies Night Thursday, May 9th, sponsors are Stitch Boutique and Madison Mud. Annual Awards Dinner for the Chamber is on Tuesday, June 4th, at the Brooklyn Country Club. For the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the museum board is meeting tonight. This month, the museum is in the final stages of installing a new permanent exhibit, and because there is restricted access to parts of the museum, free admission is offered to the public through March. Submitted a declaration of intent to Morris County Historic Trust for funding to assess the interior finishes, including the original stenciling and paint. The actual proposal is due at the end of March, and they will be requesting a 20% match from the Madison Open Space, approximately $6,000 for this grant. The museum is excited about the plan to create park space in the area behind the MTC building. They are eager to be part of the discussion also. The Recreation Advisory Committee, like to remind everybody that the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps is offering CPR, AED certification courses to all Madison recreation volunteers free of charge. These classes are unlimited to coaches. Recreation parents are encouraged to enroll as well. Classes are held bimonthly on Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM at the Madison Area Volunteer Ambulance Corps, building at 29 Prospect Street, excuse me. Please sign up via the recreation page on Rosenet. The Mayor's Wellness Program into Yellow will be held on May 5th through the 11th. Volunteers are needed to help with logistics, setup, et cetera. Saturday evening, May 11th, will feature a yellow party dinner at the Community House. Next meeting is, is, I don't have the next meeting actually. The Healthy Cooking, they want to teach how to cook healthy breakfast, lunch, and dinner every other week, starting May 19th, for four sessions. Fitness Crawl is targeting Sunday, mid to late September. Four locales seems to be the optimal mix. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. The Madison Health Department will be providing free adult health screenings, including blood analysis for women's and men's health. Appointments are being taken presently for these blood screenings, scheduled for Thursday, March 7th and Thursday, March 14th. Please call the Health Department at 973-593-3079, extension 1 to schedule. A supply of free radon and lead testing kits are available through April 15th at the Health Department, 28 Walnut Street. Please stop in for these kits or call for more information. The Health Department would like to thank those pet owners for sending in their 2019 licensing renewals. Those who have not yet licensed their pets as of February 1st need to send in their renewals with the additional $10 late fee. The Licensing Department would like to fully license all pets in a timely manner to reduce violation notices that will be generated after March 15th. Please help them achieve their licensing goal. The Health Department Annual Report that has been submitted to the Board of Health is available to residents and elected officials this evening and can also be found on the borough's website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we're on to Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received one letter dated February 19th from Mr. Bob Jennings of Albright Circle, providing pilot payments for the former Green Village Road School property.
Thank you. And now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to our agenda item or items or resolutions on the consent agenda. Our agenda item is the department head presentations related to the 2019 budget, so you can comment on any of that, or you can comment on the following resolutions, and we'll go through these very quickly, so you also understand what they are under the consent agenda. Again, later on, we'll have another invitation for discussion, broader topics. So Resolution 86, Resolution Appointing Peter Iscano, position of senior citizen van driver, previous one retired, and this is at not to exceed 29 hours per week at $16 an hour. Resolution 87, authorizing Good Grief to hold 5K run at Gerald A. Farms on Sunday, June 2nd. Resolution 88, resolution allowing use of public parking lot, number one, for Rotary Club for public shredding event on October 20th. Resolution 89, release of Surety Bond to KRE, that's the Green Village Road School Development. This is in the amount of $512,991 and $56,999 of cash bond, since they've met the requirements. Resolution 90, authorizing use of the Public Works Garage for the second annual town swap on May 11th. And Resolution 91, authorizing the St. Baldrick's Children Cancer Event on Waverly Place on Sunday, March 24th. So those are resolutions that will be consented. You may comment on any of those items or the budget discussions. If you wish to comment on any of those, please step forward, name the agenda item and your name and address, and then keep your comments to three minutes, but I'll give you a one-minute grace and allow you to go to four. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move to our department presentations. And leading off will be Russ Brown for Construction, and Russ is back from medical leave, and it's great to have you back full-time and not only running the best construction department in the state, but giving TLC to our beautiful building, too.
Thank you very much. It's got a whole new outlook on being here tonight, so I'm happy to be here and see everybody. I'll try and quickly, try and quickly run through 2018, even though it's one of my first nights out in a long time. So the Madison Building Department consists of three full-time people and five part-time people, and we oversee the construction here in Madison, as well as Adam Burrow. In 2018, we processed approximately 2,000 new permits and conducted about 8,500 different Some of the larger projects that were completed in 2018 were KRE and Mark built, I'm sure you're all aware of. We also had a few schools that we had done, which are interesting, because they're on a compressed timeframe, and they take a lot of time, and they're for free, basically. So our goals for 2019 are to be to keep up with the construction and to further implement our public portal, that's access to the public through, we opened it up this year to do online inspection requests. In 2019, we're hoping to open it up to small- In 2019, we're hoping to open it up to small permits that the state allows to be done online. Yeah, and I guess to wrap it all up, as you all know, the fees, the revenue generated by the Building Department, cover the cost, and I'm happy to say the past bunch of years we've been operating in the black.
You went way past your time a lot. Only kidding. Just one quick comment and then any other comments or questions from the council, but you talked about the portal. I've talked to multiple contractors that obviously do business in different towns, and say by far Madison with the portal where you can arrange for inspections and see the status is working so well, and it just makes it, you know, so much easier, and people will want to do business in our town. So thank you for that work on that.
Bet, you bet.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Carmella.
I think you left off a really important document here, and this is your 2018 accomplishments. I mean, it's extraordinary, and I think that people have to understand that we're also, we also have a shared service agreement with Adam Burrow. So you took that project on like a couple of years ago, and, you know, I know the people down there are very happy about it because I hear it very often.
It's really working out well.
It's working out very well. But I think that, you know, when you look at what your accomplishments were, it's pretty, it's pretty big, you know? When you start doing 2,000 permits and updates that were issued, that's pretty good.
If you take a look at, a closer look at what the staff does on a day-to-day with the phone calls and the counter, they really do a lot. They do a lot, and they manage it very well, and they typically do it with a smile on their face, so it's a great environment to be in.
And just a reminder to those in the audience and those that will be watching this either on the web or on FiOS or Cablevision in the coming week, that all the details will have this PowerPoint up on RoseNet so you can look at all the details, as those numbers are very impressive, as Councilwoman Vitale just pointed out.
And I'd like to thank you for your commitment. I understand, I think the last time I saw you, you were AWOL from your home, but really, you know, you have, you put your whole heart and soul into this, and we really appreciate it.
I appreciate everyone here, and I can't say it enough, and I wasn't going to get into this, but I mean, the support that I got, received from everyone here, from the administration, from everyone, it was home.
It is.
Where you want to be.
Thank you, Russ. All right. Go home. Yep, go home. Yep. Chief Darren.
Nice picture, isn't it? Not the guy in the lift, the truck in the center. That's our new ESU vehicle that was taken September 11th of 2018.
That is impressive.
Great picture. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight to present an overview of the Madison Police Department as well as our 2019 budget. As you all know, we're comprised of three divisions within the Police Department, Patrol, Investigation, and Support Services. The Patrol Division is the backbone of our agency. Those are the men and women on the street answering our calls for service. The Madison Police Department has a total of 85 people. You can see the list of everyone who is comprised in our department. 29 sworn, two Class Twos, nine civilians, 30 crossing guards, five per diems, and 10 auxiliary This next slide depicts the table of organization for 2019. It's the current line of authority from the chief all the way down. Next few slides just deal with our annual statistics. Calls for service, you can see this is any call that one of my officers goes on. It could be anything from a, you know, a barking dog to homicide. Every call that they go on, everything that they do is counted. As you can see, Narcan deployments, I just wanted to draw your attention to that. Madison is not immune from the opioid epidemic that's, you know, plaguing our state and country. Last year, we had six deployments of Narcan, which gave our citizens a second chance at I just want to draw your attention into theft and motor vehicle theft. We had 70, which is a, you know, a pretty decent rise in 2018. This doesn't mean we had 70 motor vehicle thefts, but we had 70 thefts reported within Madison. If I could just stress to our residents, please lock your vehicles. Take any valuables you have in your vehicles, take them out, because a lot of times, these are crimes of opportunity. So just lock your vehicles. We can't reinforce that enough. And one other complaint that was underrise for 2018 was juvenile complaints at 77. So on this page, I just want to draw your attention. Overtime, we were able to reduce overtime by 12% from our 2017 number. Outside duty hours was increased about 47%. As we all know, Madison was a pretty busy place last year. Some days, I felt really sorry for our residents because it seemed like every other street was closed. It was actually very tough for our residents to get around, but I guess that's the price we pay for progress. A lot of water mains, gas mains, road work was being accomplished, so, you know, a great increase for infrastructure. This next slide is just some of our community outreach programs. It's just a few of the ones that we do on a yearly basis. That center picture there is also one of my favorites, that's one of our patrolmen, Travis Daniel, great hockey player. I taught him everything he knows. 2018 accomplishments. The first one, one of our goals was to add a second resource officer, and with our Board of Education partners, we were able to accomplish this. I would like to see an officer in every school within the borough, but that's a discussion for another time. We were able to replace three patrol vehicles out of our special duty trust fund with no impact to our Madison taxpayer. We replaced our 1990 Ford ambulance with the new Ford F-350, the one that we saw on our first page. We also had promotions within our auxiliary unit. We celebrated the retirement of Chief Granato, 47 years, donating his time to the borough of Madison is a pretty extraordinary guy, but with his retirement, we were able to promote Chief DiMarzo, Captain Spagnolo, and Lieutenant DiMarzo. We have a great auxiliary unit. They do a tremendous job. We were also able to implement our body camera project. Every officer within the Madison Police Department now is equipped with a body camera, and we also upgraded our mobile vision cameras to the new watch guard system. The video with these high-definition cameras is just amazing compared to our old system. We also upgraded our CAD system to allow for seamless 911 transfers from the county. This, once again, was no cost to the taxpayers of Madison. As we previously heard in the opening statements, we had two officers that were accepted to the county cert team. Out of 35 officers, there were only five that made it. It's a pretty stringent testing process, and out of those five officers, two were Madison officers. So as chief of the Madison Police Department, it made me pretty proud. Those officers graduated today. Officers were trained on bleeding control, and they were given tourniquets and individual first aid kits. Every officer was trained this year. Those tourniquets were actually used twice already. One was a chainsaw accident, and another was an accident involving a stump grinder. So these people were injured pretty seriously, and all our officers with their training and those tourniquets were able to save those lives. Officers were retrained on the administration of Narcan, as we saw in the previous slide. We administered that six times last year, and hopefully it's not going to be higher this year. We also added surveillance video cameras to critical infrastructure within Madison, and all of our patrol cars were equipped with plate carriers, 10 vests. These vests are above and beyond what the officers wear on a normal day-to-day basis. I know I'm going over, I'll try to speed up.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
Goals, accreditation reassessment. I know that it's amazing that three years has gone by already, but we're up for reaccreditation this year. I have complete confidence that we will meet that standard. Our goal for this year is to complete our training center. This has been a lagging project. It's been delayed for many reasons. Some of it was building placement, DEP permitting within the wetlands buffer zone, so we think those issues are rectified, and hopefully we can complete that project this year. We hope to upgrade our communications desk, which has been a three-year capital improvement project. We'd like to fill vacancy in the Detective Bureau and add a second officer to the Traffic Safety Bureau. I would like to reinstate National Night Out this year, as well as our Every 15 Minutes program, which is up this year. We will also institute our e-ticketing platform for our parking enforcement, which should be complete within the next week or two, and also improve parking enforcement applications. The Madison Police Department operating budget falls under $25,240, which deals with salary, wages, equipment, vehicle purchases, supplies, vehicle maintenance, parts, and accessories, emergency management, NOEM. I'm presenting this budget this year relatively flat, with certain increases in contractual issues that were negotiated with the collective bargaining unit. Asking for some slight increases, $215 professional services for promotional testing, medical supplies for that Narcan increase, safety supplies for increased ammo costs, and dry goods and clothing for increased uniform costs. And the last slide here is my five-year capital improvement plan. As we see, next year will be the last installment of that desk upgrade, and there's one, I'm sorry, but there's one that is missing for next year, and that would be a $20,000 allocation for a new Alco test machine, which will be mandated by the state. So before I conclude, I will ask if there's any questions, and I will do my best to answer them.
Deb, go ahead.
Just a couple, one comment and then two questions. Happy to hear that National Night Out, hopefully, will be back. It's something I know my kids enjoyed when they were little, but I'd love to see come back. And then two questions, very briefly, because I know we don't want to take a lot of time, but for those that don't know, what is the auxiliary police versus the regular police?
Our auxiliary units are volunteers. They started around World War II, and these are the gentlemen and ladies that used to be helping us at parades, farmers market, the concert series, those things. They help us with crowd control, traffic, things of that nature, but they're strictly volunteers.
Great, thank you. And then the last one, which you may not have an answer for. It seems a pretty significant increase on the juvenile complaints, from 52 two years ago, 46 last year, to 77. Do you know if it's increased reporting of things happening? Are they still minor things that are happening, and just people being more cognizant of kids? Or is there a bigger issue?
I would have a little more onto the individual basis, just to see what's, is the reason for that increase?
Thank you.
Astrae, and then Maureen.
I just want to piggyback on what Deb said. I mean, statistically, our department seems to be doing really, really well, including our overtime costs have decreased. So I mean, it looks like Madison Police Department is just doing a great job in all areas. Thank you.
Maureen.
Well, I'd like to point out that on the slide, it appears that parking and traffic tickets are going down, but car seat installations are going up. So this is a shout-out to all the young families here in Madison. You are bringing that baby home? Well, go to the police department and have them install the child seat for you so that you know everybody's going to be safe on the ride home. And then I'd also like to point two other things. You know, that every 30 seconds, you know, we talk about juveniles. I had, I have three juveniles. They're still juveniles, even though they're over the age of 21, and that every 30 seconds really made a difference. I have seen, over the years, kids at our home are going out when everybody is home, and there is always a designated driver, or people are always taking the train, so you are getting through.
That's great. That's the whole idea of the program, to make that emotional impact.
And then finally, it's really fun to see our new officers patrolling downtown. I don't think it's deliberate, but they always seem to show up when I'm trying to cross the street, so I appreciate it.
Carmella.
Thank you, as usual. I was very interested in the statistics, because most of them went down. And I, you know, and I tried to kind of figure out why, but we'll have a conversation at a later date. I don't know, it's obviously something that's happening within the department, either to create more awareness, or, I don't know. You know, I haven't been able to put my finger on it, but I did know and realize that the statistics, you know, these statistic numbers are really, they're really down, and I think that's a testimony to the department. I'm thrilled to death that you're going to reinstitute National Night Out. I personally have missed it. You know, when I first went on this council, we all went. We all got in police cars, and we went from one place to the other. And it's something that I think the neighborhoods enjoy. Along with that, I would like, and like, a long ago, when I kind of talked about the neighborhood watch, that kind of just fell through. I know it exists someplace out in the plain, someplace, but it'd be nice, I think, to kind of get all those people back, because it's an important, it's an important part of what happens in the neighborhood. And 15 minutes, I don't sob my heart out at that one again, but it's really mind-boggling. And I'm very happy to see you doing that again this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, last week, the mayor and I went to the League of Municipalities in the snowstorm. We braved it. And one of the things that the gentleman who was speaking was talking about was the new marijuana law that we expect to come along. I'm just looking at one of your stats is expungements. If this comes to pass, does that mean all the marijuana cases that have happened in Madison over the decades, your department will be responsible for processing all those expungements?
It could be. Absolutely, and that's going to cause a huge workload for my detectives.
What's the
Expungements take a long time, as it is.
What's the average number of drug-related arrests that you have on an annual basis? Do you have any idea?
I don't at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, they were trying to convince us that, well, if you had a marijuana shop in town, and you got 5% of the excites tax, that money would help defray some of these costs, but I don't see how that's going to work, and I don't know if the state's going to give us any money. Traditionally, they have not. They give us all the work and give us, you know, no cash to take care of it, but, okay. Thank you very much.
Other comments? Just a couple of quick things. One, again, to reinforce the excellent management, chief, with overtime and other things, but it has not come at a cost of how we serve our community, and that's so important. I forget, it might have been this past year or the year before, one of the great examples of community policing is to look at a Dodge Field and see one of your officers in uniform throwing a football with the kids. You know, what that means when a kid might be in trouble further down, to have that connection with officers is so important. And the other, just reinforce to everyone, the challenge we face on a daily basis with the opiate addiction, you know, two accidents last week really reinforced, the very tragic one where three lives were lost last week in Wayne, and Narcan was used to revive a driver, and then a school bus driver with children on the bus, another accident, again, Narcan used. So the fact that our officers are trained and what we can do to control the opiate addiction crisis will go a long ways. So thank you for, and if there's no other questions, go home to your twins, please.
I just want to reinforce what Russ Brown said. I just want to thank everyone here. Obviously, everyone knows I lost my wife in December, I lost my brother in August, and I just want to thank everyone on the council here, Mayor, Mr. Cody, Mr. Burnett, I mean, the support that I felt, my family felt, was incredible. Felt good coming back to work, obviously, my second family, and I just want to thank you.
You're so welcome. Thank you for being part of our family. Fire Department, Chief Lu.
Hey, good evening. We'll try and keep it short as well. Fire Department, Mr. Serena Ray, we are a combination department. I'm responsible for both career paid staff and for volunteer staff as well. We celebrate our 130th anniversary, 138th anniversary this year as a fire department. Presently, our staffing levels, I have 30 personnel total, 14 in the career division and 16 in the volunteer division. The 14 is asterisk because one person is out on retirement due to come off the books the end of March, and hopefully we'll get him replaced to get back up to 14. On the volunteer side of things, we're at 16, 10 of which are interior structural firefighters, six of which are what we call support. six of which are what we call support. They do everything but interior structural firefighting. That number is, is at the lowest point I hope that we ever see it. It is dangerously low. For our system to operate, and for us to operate, manpower is what we need. The volunteers are an extreme part of that manpower formula. Without them, we don't do very well, at least not in the initial stages. Last year, we did not bring in any new volunteers, other than we did bring in one, but he left after two weeks when his wife moved to New York City, and he moved with her.
Which was a good choice.
We've got, we've got two in the pipeline now, and hopefully, we're going to try and get more, but we've got to do more to try and get, retain, and keep our volunteers, and get more volunteers, because they're the core of what we do, or part of the core of what we do. On the fire prevention side of things, this is just the numbers of what we did last year as far as our inspections of commercial buildings, and the student programs, and we're getting into schools doing fire prevention. Usually, that occurs in October of the year, and also dealing with, interacting with our seniors, too, and having programs set up for them as well. Our call statistics, we run statistics from 2012 to the present. We just, you know, ups and downs. Last year, we had a few more fire call incidents than we did in '17, and a few less than '16. So, we're pretty, I won't say flatline, but we're staying up around, around 800 on average. Our EMS calls have dropped off a little bit for us, which is good. But overall, we're staying up around that 1,300 more for, on a continuous basis. 2018 accomplishments, live burn training that we do at the Morse County Fire Academy. We try and get up there at least twice a year to do simulated, it's live fire, but it's on a very controlled situation, and as safe as we can make it. We complete all our mandated recertifications and training for not only the men, but for the equipment that we use. We did two confined space drills last year, one with Flora Park Fire Department. We did get our new bailout systems that you guys purchased with capital money last year. We finally got them delivered and installed in December, and we went through a whole training with the group. Everyone had to do seven jumps. Councilman Byrne was there to see him climb, jumping out the window. But the guys were happy to get it, and they're all in service with all the interior structural firefighters. We also completed all our capital projects that we did, or started last year, and we're in the process of reviewing and updating our standard operating guide and procedures. So, my goals for 2019, again, attract and retain more volunteers. We're starting to get more interactive with social media, and hopefully get into the high schools even to try and get that younger core group, because I don't care what they say, it's a young person's job, coming from an old guy like me. We want to continue to keep morale high within the fire department. Do our mandated training, realize the fire academy more, and complete our SOG upgrades. Continue working on replacing, or updating the specs to replace Engine 3, which is a 1990 engine, which is a replacement next year with capital money. Replace our trench trailer, and upgrade our communication system. Chief Datchison mentioned it. Chief Datchison and I are working hand-in-hand on this project together, because we kind of, it overlaps and integrates with each other. The dispatch desk, his radio system, our radio system, we're just different radio frequencies. But his system is outdated, and so is mine, so we're in the process of doing all that Our capital budget, looking out five years, continue with replacing turnout gear and upgrading it. The radio system upgrade, Engine 3's replacement. We did budget $43,000 last year, and put that, appropriated that through an ordinance to start the process for Engine 3. The trailer replacement, also replacing Rescue 4, starting the funding for that this year, and moving forward into the years into the future.
Chief, one question, if you go back for a second?
This?
Yeah. On Engine Number 3, when does the new Engine Number 3 actually arrive? I mean, that shows when we pay for it, but when does, when does it actually show up here?
It would, depending on when we, well, we can't order until we have the funding in place, so it probably would show up in late 2020, early 2021.
So, you can't purchase it until we've appropriated the second, or the third round of money really next year?
Correct. We're also going to hopefully be looking into the Houston Galvison Purchasing Co-op out of Texas. Many departments are using it to save money on the bidding process, and to, walking through towns that have used it in our area, it's, it's a process, but it's not a very complicated one. And it does save money on the bidding process.
Okay. As long as it's allowed by state law?
It's allowed. Usually, once we build, once we got the bid, or once it's purchased, it's about a six-to-eight month process to get the job.
Okay.
I just want-
I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to call on people. Go ahead.
You're doing fine.
I just wanted to go over your second goal, which was to keep morale high. I just want you to explain that one, because you explained it to me earlier today.
Morale is a very intricate part of the department. When morale is high, I can get my firefighters, motivate my firefighters to do, to do things, and do it, you know, do it with a smile, do it happily. One of the examples that I can share with you is the bailout system. It's a personal bailout system for their personal safety. They wanted it, they asked me for it, they researched it, we settled on it, presented it to you, you all bought it for them, and they were just ecstatic to get it. And they get the training to go with it, too. And God forbid the day they have to bail out of a window in a burning structure. They've got the tool and the resources to do it, to save their lives, so. Keep morale high, it's, it's a good thing. It's always a good thing.
Maureen?
Well, you know, as for that bailout, I was given the opportunity to suit up and jump out a window, but I declined. But I will also add that I have, I've had the opportunity a number of occasions to sit down and join the chief, and various firefighters, and at 8 o'clock in the morning over coffee, solve the world's problems, so, thank you.
Every day.
Carmella?
I want to make sure that we tell you that we, how much we appreciate you guys, okay? We've been, we've been very nice to everybody, to Russ, and to the chief, and whatever. But we really appreciate your department. I think you have a nice bunch of guys. I mean, I know a lot of them-
I do, we're blessed.
And they're extremely respectful. Listen, I'm a Realtor, you know, and I have to, they'll come and, you know, and do the test, the inspection, and believe me when I tell you, there isn't another town that does it the way Madison does. So, it's a reflection that they're as, as wonderful as they are. I will say one thing, I always worry, and I've had this conversation with Captain Nun on occasion, is the resale COs and the smoke inspections. You're doing okay, you're doing okay with it. But, you know, this year, there was a change, you know, now that, you know, the new smoke detector, warp and oxide, has to go to a 10-year battery. That's very important to get it out there, because they mean change, the ones that you have in your house now.
Yeah.
You know? So, I think somehow, and I've always been concerned, that more people, you know, more Realtors don't understand that you should be doing this for rentals as well as resales. It's very important. Captain Nun and I did, you know, we brought in a bunch of Realtors about three years ago, I guess it was, three or four years ago. It was pretty successful, so, I mean, I'm just making that.
Having our own, having our own electric utility gives us an advantage, too. When they do have meter reads and changeover, we get a list from, Donna sends it over to Captain Nun, and they'll do a, you know, cross-reference to see when someone changed tendency, and, you know, we try and get it that way, too. It's on the website, more information, or the information that Councilman Bailey, Councilman Bailey, you know, spoke about at the last meeting, you know, on RoseNet or MadisonFD.com, it brings you to the, to the same location on the information, when you sell your house and the 10-year smoke detectors, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor, I mean, chief, did a, the, one other thing to point out, you're talking about building a sense of community in the gap without the National Night Out. Your department doing a great job of getting the kids out on the apron there, and playing with the hoses, and seeing what the fire department's all about. So, thank you for developing that sense of community. All right, our Director of Public Works, Ann O'Brien.
Good evening, council members, mayor. Our 2018 accomplishments were, the four-year labor agreement is finalized, four years going forward. North Street Pump Station, the capital project for that is completed, and the negotiated internet connection for the water with Southeast Morris Water is finalized. And that was a process. Implemented a new road pretreatment program for pretreatment of roads on ice and snow before storms, which is a little different than the brine system Madison was traditionally using. And we completed energy-efficient projects in the mechanical services garage. And if you look at the capital budget, you'll see some money in there. We're updating the windows to make the building more energy-efficient. The windows were put in when the building was built, in a single pane windows. The goals for 2019, standardized safety practices and continue to operate in a safe manner, something that I've been striving for since I've been employed with the borough, and we're making headway in that, so our injuries are going down. We have a safety meeting every quarter, and the public works injuries are going down year to year in total. Our updated radio system, Chief DeRosa is working with me on that. When I came to employ here, it's something I was concerned about. Our radio system is not functioning for what we need in this day and age. We need more capabilities, and one of those things is, we need capabilities in order to talk to the other emergency services during emergencies. And it was a gap in our system where I couldn't talk to the police chief or the fire chief directly when there's a fire, or there's an emergency, or there's an event downtown, we have Bottle Hill Day. We need to be able to communicate directly on the same frequency in the command structure, because we are part of that command structure. So, updating our radio system to come up into the equalization with the police and fire and that. One of the things we've been working on, and I have to thank Michael for all the Facebook posts and stuff, and I try to send him a couple posts a week to get out there to the public exactly what we do and how we do it, and the reason we do it, because I think sometimes there's a myth on how things get done, or why they get done, and there's a reason. And I'd have to say that Michael's doing a terrific job with it, and when I don't send him something, a post, he sends me a reminder saying, yesterday, I'm going to get my post. And so, I usually try to work on that. And then the final thing is, I've been working with the Shade Tree and Environmental Commission on long-term goals. As a member of many Shade Tree terms, and our councils, and environmental commissions, when I go to the meetings, I think that, you know, they do a great job. We're all volunteers. But one thing I think I would like to see them work on is long-term goals and stuff down the road, like the trees downtown, we talk about those sometimes, but we should also be talking about replacing some trees in areas down in five or 10 years, because if we know trees are going to get 50 or 60 years, if they're 30 or 40 years old, we should be looking at that now to see what we're going to be doing in 10 years, and at least looking at a plant and how we're going to do that. Same thing with the Environmental Commission. If there's areas in town that we think need a cleanup, or something along the railroad, or we want to do something a little bit differently, we should start working with either transit or someone else now, looking at maybe four or five years, maybe this project want to come along, rather than maybe hitting some stumbling blocks when we want to go through the project. So, that was my suggestion to both those commissions. Any questions?
John?
I just want to make a comment. One of the things that this, these reports don't tell us is something that I think is your real strength, and that is your responsiveness, your cooperation, and the quality of work you do. It just doesn't come across in that, and I just wanted to emphasize that I'm incredibly impressed every time you guys go out and do work. You're amazing, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much for that. And really, the thanks goes to the men and women in the Department of Public Works. I like to say that I'm just the wind in the sails, you know, and a lot of things happen, and we got an email today, and, you know, I just advised the guys about an email I got, and then I got a follow-up email from a resident saying that it was accomplished and taken care of. You know, I don't actually do the work, but the men and women, you know, follow through in that, and that's really where a lot of the credit goes, so thank you.
Thank you. Ostry?
Could you just explain your new, your new pretreatment technology for inclement weather, and is that something that's more environmentally sensitive, or?
I don't know in balance between the brining and if it's environmentally more sensitive. So, the idea of what I'm doing is mixing brine with salt. We're going to call it salt paste, is the term that's used. And so, when you see a truck going around the day before, like the last storm we had, you'll see the salt coming out kind of like thicker. It's not bouncing like a regular salt, but it's been wetted with brine. And the idea of that is, if you look at the back of the truck, the salt spreader is offset to one side. We want to put traction down, you know, there's breakdown lanes and there's parking in town. So, we move the salt spreaders to the side of the truck where the cars are going to be driving mostly, towards the center of the road and towards the center of the line. So, when you go up the road and when you come down, you're getting a concentration of salt towards the middle of the road. That gives cars traction. The old style, where the salt spreader was pretty much in the middle of the thing, well, as you were parking, driving past cars that were parked, and in the breakdown lane, you were getting a lot of salt, but the concentration, you don't really need it there, because those vehicles are parked in the breakdown lane. And what this does is, it allows the salt to work at a little bit of a lower, about 23, 22 degrees. It'll be activated by that, and it'll melt a little bit of the snow, but also give that traction as you're coming home. The brine, what brine does is, that is a, builds a thermal barrier between the asphalt and the snow. So, when the ground temperature is very cold, and I check the ground temperature before and during every storm, when the asphalt temperature is very cold, and you brine, that allows a thermal barrier to be built, so that when you plow, the snow comes up in pretty much kind of like black asphalt underneath it. If the asphalt temperature is too warm, and you put brine down, when that snow comes down, hits the asphalt, it turns the water and washes the brine away. That's why I'm not a fan of brining. I don't think that it works in all applications. And we don't get deep, deep cold weather in New Jersey where we would justify the brine.
Thank you. Any other questions? Job well done.
Thank you.
And presentation-wise, much shorter than last year. Thank you. Health Department.
Bob wants to go home. Bob will go, he wants to go home. It's less. Yeah. Because he always takes the longest.
Evening.
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 So, the question is, what's the responsibilities of the Health Department?
You know, a lot of times, health departments are ones that are kind of quiet and laying in the background, not, not as big as DPW, or police, or fire. But one of the things we try to do is, we try to protect, promote, and provide services to all residents on big and small issues. And those big and small issues relate to disaster planning, they relate to everyday small issues. Walking out around town today in downtown, you find garbage and everything blowing around because of the weather, and cardboard containers. So, yeah, we try to call a few people, talk to a few vendors, and actually put some cardboard back into the cardboard containers, then, and call the garbage people. So, there's like five or six different elements of something just happened with one small thing, which is cardboard flying around today. But yet, it helps clean up downtown by doing those microscopic little pieces. In addition, we have the big picture thing where we work with OEM, police department, fire department, in regard to any big picture problems for, for long-term planning. Then we deal on a federal level with the Center for Disease Control, with the State Department of Health, get input from Rutgers University Medical School a lot of times regarding various kinds of issues and illness. Our department does quite a few different varying tasks. Animal control is one of them, licensing of the animal, rabies clinics. Our environmental health relates to inspecting food establishments and facilities, also reviewing plans for those in conjunctions with actually the construction department. We follow up on environmental complaints, and the numbers I have here are the larger-picture pieces. And then we also, more recently, do a lot of investigation for blood levels in children for lead. The levels have been reduced, and therefore, there's a lot more work, and we do quite a lot more hours' worth of work environmentally, and also nursing following up on those issues. Our health education programs are really related a lot to MASA, TRITOWN, so both senior citizens, the opiate problem, and things like that. On a daily basis, we also have a lot of nursing services. You can see, we've provided, you know, almost 1,400 vaccinations, 159 infectious disease investigations were completed, and then in all our schools from pre-K to 12, there were 19 schools that were audited for their vaccinations. Talking about several, several files, a lot, a lot of hard work, and- and hours. And then we do a lot of case management, again, on blood levels for lead. Marriage licenses, death certificates, things like that are on an ongoing daily basis that are conducted. So our goals for, our goals for 2019 is to continue to review our ordinances and make sure that our ordinance for the Board of Health are current up to state regulations, provide quality public health services in the communities we serve as well as Madison, further develop community partnerships with all types of organizations, explore current requirements and costs for public health accreditation. That's a big piece that the state is pushing for. So we'll be talking to the Board of Health about those particular practices. And then we want to forge a working relationship with Atlantic Healthcare System with their new physical rehabilitation hospital in town and see how we might be able to develop some good working relationships again. And then we want to also continue to service and go spend quality time providing services to our contract communities of Chatham Township, Cranford, and also Springfield. We have no large budget requests at all in the cap budget, no cap budget requests in the Health Department. Thank you.
Questions? Maureen?
I have two questions. How large an exposure do we have for lead levels in children right now?
I'm sorry, repeat. I understand.
Well, I mean, I know that the, I know the acceptable levels have been coming down, which means that the pool gets larger. But is there, can you give, is there a number of cases that we've seen in 2018 involving lead exposure?
The number, but I actually have it, there's a dozen or so, but I have it in here. And I could, I could give this to you.
Oh, that's okay.
Exact number. It's a small number. It's not hundreds.
Right.
But it's definitely more than it was a few years ago because the levels are now down to five.
And my second question is, I know we are working very hard at getting children vaccinated, but in some parts of the country, we're seeing outbreaks of diseases that we once thought were controlled because of vaccination and people not choosing not to vaccinate their children and then exposing others. Or do we have that, is that a problem we have in this community?
That doesn't seem to be a problem here. And in fact, we do a lot of immunizations for other communities who do not do this through a physician that refers to us for the immigrant population. And we embrace that. And we have Vaccine for Children program. And Marlene spends a lot of good quality time providing those immunizations and welcoming people. So in that regard, it seems like we're actually helping Morris County in a great way because we embrace helping and assisting people in this particular physician who used to be in Madison prior, is now in Marstown, still refers to us. And we, again, use the Vaccine for Children program, which is free. We do spend Madison's time, but we think it's well worth the effort to do exactly what you're saying, keep a high level of immunization.
And I would, I would point out to our viewing public that if you have a high school senior in your home and they are going off to college next year, that you can go to the Madison Health Department and you can receive the meningitis vaccine and you can also get the hepatitis vaccine as well.
And then the last piece is I have for members, we'll be sending it, putting it out on the web, the Madison Health Department Annual Report, which we're, we presented to the Board of Health last week at their meeting. And this is just a piece that the State Department of Health would like us to provide to the governing body also. So we'll send this to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
If you have any questions on that, at that time, please feel free to follow up. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your leadership. Library. Lynn?
Good evening. In addition to the time and the effort spent in 2018 on internal administrative projects, the library put a premium on outreach programs and services to the community. We registered patrons for library cards, checked materials out to them, guided them in the use of our electronic resources, and offered programs all in a wide variety of venues beyond the library itself. In addition, our adult programming has grown significantly with the addition of lifestyle programs for all interests and several new and very popular clubs, many of which are funded by the Friends of the Madison Library. We improved the visibility of our services through increased use of the Rosenet and library websites, social media, and local news outlets. And as I think you'll see in the next slide, program attendance indicates that our efforts were very successful. The digitization and indexing of the Madison Eagle is now completed, ready for public launch, which we're very proud of. And in December, we debuted two different streaming services, Upla and Canopy, which provide digital access to a broad assortment of video, audio, and ebook content in English and in other languages. In terms of statistics, really, the key takeaways from this slide are the dramatic increase in the circulation of electronic materials that we've seen and the increase in both the number of programs that we've offered and the attendance at those programs.
One quick question about the electronic stuff.
Yes.
Do people actually have to come in to do that or can they check that out online?
You have to come in to get your library card. Once you have your library card and your electronic, your PIN number, then you can check it out from home.
Okay.
Upla and Canopy in particular, because they are what we call proprietary services. In other words, we've paid for them. They're not provided by the state library or the main consortium. Because we fund them ourselves, they're limited to use by Madison patrons only. So it's taxpayer funding, so it's Madison taxpayers.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? No? Okay. For 2019, some of our goals are new and some have carried over from 2018. The time has come for us to develop a new long-range technology plan. We also want to implement the use of credit cards for patrons. And we need to upgrade our outdated telephone system. We will continue to place a priority on outreach programs and services, which we've had such success this year, often in partnership with a variety of community agencies. And we are looking forward to the public launch of the Digitized Eagle. Our top priority in 2019 will be the library facility as we move to secure funding from the state through the Construction Bond Act passed in 2017. Thanks to Borough's support, plans for resurfacing of the library roof are already in place. And we're working with the architecture firm of Arkari and Ivy to finalize plans with the replacement of the ceilings and lighting, as well as abatement in most of the building. The project will also take into consideration our plans to renovate the interior of the library to create a welcoming, flexible, functional space, which will both meet the current needs of our patrons and adapt to their future needs as those evolve. In addition, we'll be assessing and addressing the exterior appearance of the library. Our 2019 operating budget does not differ greatly in most areas from last year, but it does reflect the increase in our mil rate funding and our focus on capital projects. Our capital improvement plan remains the same as last year. The target dates have been projected out a further year across the five years due to the delay in the application process for the construction bond funding. As you can see, we plan for the sequence of capital projects to move from the top down, starting with the roof and the ceilings and lighting and abatement, and finally, the courtyard, plaza, and fountain repairs. With the exception of the work funded through the Construction Bond Act and matched by the borough, the projected interior space renovation that I referenced earlier will be funded by the library through gifts, donations, and capital fund earmarked for that purpose.
Quick question about the asbestos abatement. With the money that's budgeted for next year, will we finally have abated all the asbestos in the building or are there still areas that remain?
There are two areas that we will be unable to abate.
Okay.
One is a very tiny server room, which houses all of the Rosenet nerve center. It would be too difficult and complicated to take that down unless we absolutely had to.
Okay.
And the other is the boiler room at the back of the library, where there is just so much connected to the ceiling and the walls that, again, we'd prefer not to have to disturb that if we don't absolutely have to. Other than that, everything should be taken care of.
Those are also those spaces that really are not occupied by people on a regular basis. They're more, you know, maintenance space. And then the other question is, when you do have to do that asbestos abatement, I'm assuming the library's going to have to close for a period of time?
We will have to close, yes.
Have we projected what that's going to be at this point?
At this point, I don't think we can really, you mean when or how long?
How long?
Obviously, we're hoping that it'll be the shortest possible closure. We haven't been given a specific timeline yet.
Okay.
Because the problem is, in order to abate, we have to take down the ceilings and lighting. Once the abatement is done, hazard is technically passed, but there's no ceiling and no lighting. So we'd have to restore the ceilings and lighting before we could even operate in a limited way within the building itself. So plans are underway now for a provisional operation plan where we would work out of our Chase meeting room, perhaps out of other locations in the area. And it's one of the reasons we've been focusing so hard on programming and outreach.
Okay.
So that we can take our show on the road and continue to provide library services even building.
And you mentioned it's going to be part of ceiling and lighting replacement, which I see is actually going to be funded the following year. So does that mean we're actually really not going to do the asbestos abatement and the ceiling and lighting replacement until at least 2021?
I don't think there's any way to really know at this point because we're waiting for the state to move. Once the state moves on the funding, then we'll have a better idea of when that funding would be available, which will give us the best ability to plan the actual time of the project.
Thank you very much.
And just a reminder on asbestos abatement, for those out there, that sometimes in-place, encapsulated is the best place to leave it as opposed to overall removal. So that, which is why we're leaving it in those non-public areas. We have Deb, John, and Maureen all lined up here.
Okay. Just a couple of comments. As a mother of children who would hide library books so they didn't have to return them, and we'd end up with $40 and $50 library fines when we'd get to library, credit card is appreciated. We gave quite a bit of money, still do. And I just have to comment, I think it's, I have kids that refuse to read on a Kindle, that will still ride their bike down to the library to get books to go with the ones we have in the house. So it's nice to see they're not the only ones, that you're still circulating that many items. I'm sure some of that is videos and Xbox games because my kids also take those. But nice to see that that's staying high. And the program outreach, I have to say, I've seen it on Facebook, just the number of programs and the different types. It's greatly appreciated and I'm glad to see that it's being successful. So thank you for increasing on that.
Thank you.
John and Maureen?
Well, I just, Lynn, I just wanted to thank you so much for stepping out and having your staff involved in other activities outside of the library per se, like Jeff Payton being the co-chair of the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, your involvement with and responsiveness to TRITOWN 55+. As well as, we're using your rooms all the time. We're in the rush room and the library room, all the time, training room, rather, all the time for our meetings. And I really want to thank you for that and all of your cooperation. You guys are great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen?
And speaking as a mother of juveniles, there's actually more to the library than storytime on Thursday afternoon, although that's a very important time for a lot of people. You know, all of the programs that are coming up, the movies that are being shown, these are, these are wonderful things. Libraries are community centers. It's where everyone from one side to the other side, to the third side, can come together on equal footing and enjoy each other's company. So thank you. Thank you for providing that. And I know we're going to see even more coming up. I might even have to stop in the maker's space and see if I can do something with glue. And I, and I want to also point out that on March 23, the Friends of the Library will be having their gala. The Friends of the Library are a very, very important component of the library. The funds that they raise are, all go to support the collection and programs of the library. So I'd ask all of you to look on, it's Saturday, the 23rd, I think it's about 5 o'clock in the afternoon. It's a, it's a wonderful event. I wouldn't miss it for the world. And I hope to see a lot of people there. Thank you.
Ostry?
Lynn, do you have shared services with our county library and the surrounding libraries? Do you, do you work with other libraries to share materials or?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We belong to the main consortium, which is the Morris Automated Information Network. That's a group of 38 libraries, mostly in Morris County, although one or two outside. And we transfer materials between libraries all the time. We, we all share a pool of electronic resources. We all use a shared integrated library system. So that's our catalog and our circulation system. We also are part of the oldest consortium in the state, which is the MUF Consortium, the Morris Union Federation. And that includes eight libraries, five of which, no, four of which are in Morris County, one of which is Bernardsville outside of Morris County, and three in Union County, Summit, New Providence, and Berkeley Heights. And we have reciprocal borrowing privileges between those libraries as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that main, our, our ability to be part of main is actually what allowed us to continue to be open during the previous asbestos removal so that we were able to move into the Chase Room. And while you couldn't physically go into the Madison Library to get a book, you could go online and reserve it. It would come to the Chase Room and you could pick it up. So we were able to continue our services even during a potentially down period.
It's a fabulous support network. It really is.
And you're still, still sharing IT person with Chatham?
We are.
Okay. So that's another, different sort of a shared service.
It's a different type of shared service, yes.
Carmella?
Lynn, I just have a question about your, your goal for 2019, one which is expand the mobile services to seniors. Can you elaborate on that? Because I think that's very important. I'm not quite sure that, you know, they know about it. You know, so I'd like to see what, how you're going to do this.
Certainly. This year, we started out, obviously, one of our staff members, Jeff Payton, is on the seniors advisory committee. Our librarians have also been working very closely with Sarah, who is the senior services coordinator. We have been taking activities to the senior center. We've taken trivia games. We've made arrangements to do other things together with the senior center. We have partnered with Sunrise Assisted Living. One of our librarians goes once a month to Sunrise Assisted Living to sign people up for library cards, check materials out to them. They can make requests. He'll take whatever they're looking for. And if there's anything they need in between his visits, we can arrange for that. And most recently, we, this is something we had wanted to do, one of our programs, the Adult Craft Club, which is new, is extremely popular. But some, certain seniors are not as mobile and have difficulty getting out to it. So we've now taken that craft club over to Shadow Tierrey. And so whenever we host one within the library, we then turn around and take it to Shadow Tierrey for people to participate in. That's the kind of, and it's the kind of outreach we're hoping to expand this year. We're hoping to take our programs and our services to more of the senior venues, places where people can enjoy what we have to offer without necessarily having to come to the building. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Bob, we're out of time. I'm sorry.
Basketball is like that.
Last but not least, Bob Vogel with Engineering.
So much, Mayor, council members? Great. So operationally, Engineering Department had a great year in 2018. Just as far as staff, we have four staff members, including myself, very small staff, spent a lot of time doing contracted services, outsourced most of the work that gets done as far as capital projects are concerned in town. And obviously Fran, Dan, and Frank get involved in the planning and zoning boards and do a lot of enforcement and application processing. So overall, our accomplishment last year included the contracted services, which affected about 11 miles of road in town, which is a bitter, a bitter year. I don't think we've ever had more. So very good progress as far as road resurfacing and road reconstruction was concerned. The traffic calming signals were installed on Greenwood Avenue, which should be a little bit more popular in town. I believe we are going to order another four, five, six of those signals for different locations throughout town this spring and hopefully install those over the summer this year. But last year, we got our foot in the door with Greenwood Avenue traffic calming signals. And they seemed to get a pretty good response as far as the public acceptance and, and safety improvements are concerned. The department was able to do its last phase of sore condition assessment study, which gives us 50 miles of sore video on a hard disk drive. gives us 50 miles of sewer video on a hard disk drive, which we will key into a GIS and use for our programming moving forward. We have a lining program which is being proposed for this year, which will follow up on that sewer assessment from last year. And so that was a very important milestone for us to accomplish as well. The Elmer Street Storm Sewer, talking about milestones, we have been talking about getting that project done, that interceptor sewer, for quite some time. So that was accomplished last year as well, and I'm very happy to see that done, as well as the resurfacing of the road. Harley-Dodge Memorial Plans continue to be finalized. We have good reviews from the county, given one minor objection, which I would classify as minor, as far as the... There's a special coding that the county's disagreeing with on the plaza surface itself, which I think we have to substitute some other type of coding for. But ultimately, I think the county's ready to move forward with the Harley-Dodge Plaza Restoration Project, and the contract documents are 95% complete for that, which was the accomplishment from last year. We also got a portion of Summer Hill Park Trails completed, which was nice. We haven't really done a whole lot of work in trails historically, but thanks to Ostry's involvement and some grant writing and some participation from the county of Morris, we are able to put... Make some progress on reestablishing trails at Summer Hill Park and actually improving some of the trails at Summer Hill Park. And we're going to move on this year again to the Madison Recreation Complex as far as trails projects are concerned. That's all good news. Also, yep, as far as the wells are concerned, we got the contracted services to get the design plans and specifications, bid and awarded the construction. And obviously, with the patch report earlier, you heard that the construction was essentially complete for a well A B treatment facility. So that was a nice component of our water system to get completed. Water mains will continue for this year. Another section of well A... No, actually, well B is going to be updated under contract this year. We have those construction plans done and ready for bid during the summer. As far as receiving money, I know Jim always says we're good at spending money, but as far as receiving money is concerned, we were able to acquire $425,000 worth of project grants, supporting our capital programs. And the Planning and Zoning Department, essentially anchored by Fran, was able to pull in $100,000 worth of fees, which I believe is a record for them as well. So as far as 2018 is concerned, we had a very good year. I thank you for your support on those issues as well. It takes a team to really get these capital projects and the appropriations and everything lined up and moving in the right direction. So thanks for that. As far as our goals for 2019 is concerned, I think we want to kind of continue to do the good work that we've been doing. I just got a text from Frank, who completed a presentation to the county Community Development Block Grant Program this evening. He said they had very good comments, and we're very supportive of the application for 2019 funding round for $80,000. So that's good to get started. We have not heard back from the state yet as far as Glenwell Road is concerned, which is a quarter million dollar ask. But hopefully, we'll get a response from the state on that issue with it in the March As far as closing out 2018 infrastructure projects is concerned, there's very little left to be done, but there are a couple of final payment change orders which have to be completed. So we are essentially done with that as well. As far as capital asks for the five-year capital program are concerned, our storm sewer system has a very moderate program, which will include notably a couple of sewer lining projects. Those sewer lining projects were evidenced and investigated using our sanitary sewer money from last year. As far as the videotaping is concerned, we found a couple of storm sewers at the same time, which were in rough shape, and really do require some immediate attention as far as lining is concerned. So we will put those bid packages together for the summer and ask you for the appropriations for that capital money in the next few months. The sanitary sewers, you can see, we have been spending relatively consistently a quarter million dollars on sanitary sewer improvements. The last few years have been in our investigation. The next few years are going to be on lining projects. And so what we identified last year as far as sanitary sewer improvements were concerned, that were sanitary sewers in poor condition, that really did need to have the PVC lining done. We're going to actually contract those PVC lining projects and implement those this year and the next several years. They're not inexpensive, but they are incredibly cost-effective when it comes to an alternative like open cutting this sanitary sewer and having to do that lining. The lining projects don't require an open cut in the road for the most part. And so it's very cost-effective and timely as far as that is concerned. Buildings and grounds, Ken was here, he had a number of items. The senior center, through Sarah, has had a number of items I'd like to have funded. There are a number of IT and small building projects which we'd like to accomplish. I suspect all that will come under one appropriation request towards the summer, probably after the entire capital budget is approved officially in the April-May timeframe. The water utility, last but not least. What we'll probably do with the water utility for this coming year is split the appropriations in two. I will say that the building project with Bee Well probably makes more sense to appropriate that money end of the summer, beginning of the fall, and again, accomplish those projects in the winter months, as we have with the treatment plant project this past winter. And the other half of that appropriation request, probably on the order of $570,000, will be for water main replacement and a number of operations items for Tom. Those items will be requested in the next month... Nope, in the next two months, so we can line up some water main replacement projects for the summer. And I believe that kind of kills it for us.
All right. Very good. Lot going on.
Yep.
Carmella, and then Maureen?
Bob, I have a question going all the way back to, I guess, your first... One of your first slides. You talk about the sanitary sewers evaluation. There were 49 miles of digital video and reports. It'd be interesting for us to know, I think, what was that evaluation like? What do we have to anticipate from that evaluation? Because it's a lot to do with the lining that you're talking about on different streets and whatever, so.
So what all those videotapes and reports gave to us was a condition assessment of various reaches of sanitary sewer throughout the entire town. What you'll find, and I've done my own informal evaluation, but I'm hoping that we get a more professional report that we can pull together and distribute to you all in the spring and summer months. But I... You know, what is essentially it says is, there are certain areas of sanitary sewer which need lining, certain areas of sanitary sewer which may require a point repair, which is an open cut fix. There are certain sections of sanitary sewer which require things like the foam where you do root control. And there's certain sections of sanitary sewer throughout the town, predominantly, the majority of the town, is in pretty good shape. So, yeah, I mean, what I've reviewed on the reports for those 49 miles at present indicates that we are in relatively good condition. Our program dollars that we put aside in capital for the next five years are appropriate, as there are a number of years of lining projects that we have to line up in order to really get things in great shape. So I'm happy to do a separate presentation on that or a separate report on that in the coming months, and it'll give you a real good sense of what's contained in all those things.
The other question I wanted to ask was, I'm looking at the water utility and whatever. Maybe Jim can answer this. I don't see anything here. Am I missing this about the smart meters, you know, and any money that's putting into us changing along with the electric meters? Note that Tom is doing something with the water meters as the new ones go in. I don't see it in here.
So we've already budgeted the money and appropriate... And not appropriated, but we've already reserved the money in prior years. We anticipate probably later this year, early next year, going with larger orders of the modules. Right now, as I think I've reported to the council in the past, we're focusing on deployment of the meters, and then we're hoping to deploy some of the collection system, which will be able to work with the existing electric... The new electric meters we've put out there, and there are new water modules out there. So we'll start testing the system, and then we'll go more heavily into the deployment of the water meters and the modules in 2020.
What's been put out there has been paid for by prior appropriations.
Prior reserves, yes. We have...
So money's reserved but not appropriated at this point.
Correct.
Maureen?
Okay. Well, I'd like to say I'm really appreciative of the evaluations that we're doing, especially on the sanitary sewers, because we have seen the last couple of years that staying on top of our sanitary sewer system can save the borough money.
It's a nasty surprise, one.
It's a nasty surprise. But I'd also like to point out, because we're in budget talks, and budgets always translate to taxes. And I think this is a comment that I can make as a summation of all of the presentations we've seen here tonight. The projections going out over the next five years with some outliers tend to be very, very, very similar in terms of the amount of money, that we're not having years where we're spending $100,000, and then the third year, we're spending $1 million. We are putting the cost of projects out over a longer time, which is, of course, what you want to do if you are budgeting for large-ticket items. And then also, by having that window into the future, perhaps, we're better able to structure budgets that don't create surprises when the tax bill comes to pay for those budgets. So I really appreciate the care that you and all the other department heads have put into not only this presentation and your budget request, but in the way you spend the taxpayers' money. So thank you very much.
Okay, Bob. Thank you for batting cleanup. And just to reinforce some of the comments with the capital budget, this demonstrates a commitment on the selected body and the previous ones, probably second to none in the state as far as making sure we invest in our infrastructure. And number two, the leadership of our staff to make sure we get it, because it's get it done. So it is a two-part thing. One, we need the money, and then we need the management to get it done. So thank you for your leadership in that area.
Good planning and good cooperation all around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We move on to ordinances for hearing, which there are none. So we're now on to our second for invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on any topic. Please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but I will give you a one-minute grace period and have you stop at four. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, we close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for March 11, 2019. We publish in the Madison Eagle, post on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requested.
I call up ordinance 5-2019 for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Excuse me. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 195-27 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development Ordinance of the Borough of Madison Regarding Changes in Elevation.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor, I move ordinance 5-2019.
Second. Council discussion?
I just want to point out that the reasoning behind this ordinance is to support implementation of rules regarding new construction and renovation in the borough, specifically as it refers to setbacks and elevations and how that development affects its neighbors. So this has been put in place to make sure that all those rules and all those boxes are tucked.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Okay. Will the clerk please read the statement related to consent agenda?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 86-2019 through Resolution 91-2019.
Second. Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There is no unfinished business. Clerk, please read the voucher register.
The current fund, $6,321,650.35. General capital fund, $11,270.31. The electric operating fund, $714,414.88. Order operating fund, $27,295.50. Order capital fund, $5,270.28. And the trust, $78,719.35. Total is $7,158,620.69.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second. Question? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe? Yes.
Ms. Byrne? Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
In the new business, I'd like to make the following appointments, requesting council confirmation for Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee. Joan McCary of 190 Luanica Way for a three-year term through December 31, 2021, and Lisa Jordan, 36 Luanica Way, for a three-year term through December 31, 2021, and for Recreation Advisory Committee, Suzanne Whitehorn, 12 Vinton Road, for a one-year term through December 31, 2019.
Mayor, I move all three appointments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And while it was nice to have Ray up here, it's much nicer to have Liz back. And we almost made 10 o'clock.
It's good?
It was putting butt ass. Gets us on the lights.
Well done, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We dealt with the jerk.
10 o'clock, 10:00.
Yeah, might as well.
You were fucking early.
Time everything.
Yep. You win.